All right, with hearing that, I think we have everybody else. Hope everybody had a good week, a couple of weeks here and I think we'll call this meeting to order. We're gonna start off with Pledge Allegiance. Pledge Allegiance?
Pledge Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, deliberate, and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming out tonight and joining us on this. I'd like to get a motion to approve the present agenda. Can I get a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I heard that, Chris. It's an opportunity for, at this point, we're gonna open up to the public, the opportunity for any public to ask any questions or say any comments. Just a reminder, this is being recorded and got a hand up already, Ms. Brownell.
So promoting her to present.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm back.
Hi.
Thank you. This time I have a name on here, so I appreciate the board for inviting comments from the public.
I got.
I did it right this time, Craig, thank you.
I knew A B.
For those of you who don't know, I'm sorry. Are you talking? I'm sorry.
No, I was looking for A B, but then I saw your name. How you doing?
For those of you who don't know, I'm the elementary school teacher and a pair of students. They met at lovely students, that's what they wanted to add. I'm commenting again tonight because I am still concerned about teaching in person. Two weeks ago, I believe district made the right choice to switch to remote.
Abby, hold up a second. Try shutting your video off.
Am I glitching?
Yes, try shutting your video. There you go, try that.
Start from the beginning.
No problem.
There you go.
Okay, is it working now?
Yeah.
Okay, good. I'm commenting again tonight. Oh, I know, I know how it is. So I don't know how much you could hear. I'll back up a little bit. I'm commenting tonight because I'm still concerned about teaching in person. Two weeks ago, I believe the district made the right choice to switch to remote, but I'm not currently aware of any conditions that have changed, which would make returning next week a safe choice. And for those of you who've been to my classroom, you've seen that the first rule in music class is to be safe. Right now, it is clear that being together is not safe. Our county has seen a huge rise in cases in the past few weeks. When school started, we have had, we had three active cases in the whole county. By Thanksgiving, there were sixty-three. By New Year's Eve, it was up to two-hundred-and-fifteen, and alarmingly, just yesterday, we slid four-hundred active cases in Columbia County. In other words, we now have more than a hundred times as many sick people in our community than we did when school began. And if the community is sick, the school is sick. The best way to keep our community safe is to encourage people to stay home. As a parent, I would never claim that remote is best for learning, of course, it's not. It has been especially very hard on my kids to keep transitioning from in-person to remote and then back again for all of the different occasions that have happened this year. It would be still harder if they needed to quarantine away from school while their peer continued in person. The teaching staff have put in a lot of time and effort to make remote learning as engaging as possible for our students, and you may have noticed that in your own homes. It's going great. The kids are still learning when they're home. They're just doing it in a way that doesn't put others at risk of getting sick. Fortunately, there is light at the end of the tunnel. Just last week, the vaccine became available to school employees. It's gonna, hallelujah. I was fortunate enough to schedule an appointment this week, but unfortunately, many of my colleagues weren't lucky enough to log on at just the right moment, and all appointment times were taken. Others are not eligible yet because the vaccine requires fourteen days without known exposure to an active COVID case. So many of my coworkers won't be able to have their first shot until that month and their second shot three to four weeks later. Maybe until April before the staff has been able to complete their vaccinations. So in the meantime, due to the statewide rise in cases and the spread of more contagious COVID variants, I believe our whole state should be responding by exercising more caution, but we don't mind being in a crisis like all of them. Unfortunately, it currently seems that any attempts to flatten the curve are falling to local leaders instead of statewide leaders. I encourage this district to prioritize safety and extend our remote learning a few more weeks until our county cases fall below a hundred. And this stuff has all had a chance to be vaccinated. Thank you so very much for your time.
Thank you, Abby. Does anybody else from the public have a, or amongst us, have a comment? Attendees. Looking for hands up. Did we lose Ted to the attendees?
Yep, just promoted him back.
Okay. You gotta watch Ted. Um. Thank you, Abby, for your comments and concerns, and if nobody else has any questions or concerns or comments, we're gonna move on, and I'm watching for hands up still, so. All right. Moving along to board member comment. Any board members have any comments? Anything exciting happen since we've seen each other? Do anything? I see one hand up. Chris, how you doing, bud?
I'm well, thank you. How are you?
Good.
I just wanted to comment on, and I'm sure we're gonna talk more about it at the meeting, but just to comment on the current state of the virus and issues with the vaccine in the state. You know, obviously, how the district is addressing these things is obviously ongoing, but with this other strains in the community, we don't know where it is, we don't know how much. Just considering that it's going to be likely the predominant strain very soon, from what I've read recently, that we just all should be very aware of that and should be very diligent to everyone we know and, you know, expressing as much caution as possible. I just wanted to reiterate that, I thought it was important.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other board members have any comments? I'd just like to thank the teachers and staff for commenting last meeting and building heads, bringing it to our superintendent's front, and I think we made the right call so far, and we'll keep evaluating and keep everybody as safe as we can. So, you know, thanks a lot. We heard a lot that the board hadn't heard, and appreciate that input, so. I don't see any other hands, so I think we can move on. Ted's got his hand up.
See if I can do this right. Jen's comment at the last board meeting dramatically affected my outlook on this COVID situation within school. I have a little saying that I apply and try and teach my kids, you don't have to agree to respect. And I gotta say that that garnered a lot of respect. Kinda like to leave it there, but at the same time, encourage people to continue making comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Beth's got her hand up. Beth, go ahead.
Um, I guess that my concern would be, or the issue I want to raise is to really be concerned for everybody's safety, and if an extra week at home gets us through the time, you know, I guess my biggest concern is making sure that teachers have the right amount of time to be able to get a vaccine. I know I'm now, was able to sign up, but we're going all the way to Utica to be able to receive them. And I think with the shortage of dosages local, I think that's something that we need to be bringing into our decision-making process along the way.
All right, thank you. Ted, you still have your hand up. I heard you laughing, Muriel.
Still learning to drive this thing there. I'm following Muriel.
All right, that's good. All right, moving right along, building in department reports. Kristen, I think is up first. How you been?
I've been good, thank you. How have you been? Good, good. So I think that John, Mike, and I were kinda planning on just jumping in altogether, if that's okay with you.
Great.
Because we do spend a lot of time together trying to figure out what's the best course of action for everyone. So giving you a little update about what's been going on in the elementary school. I have the advantage of being full-time, where the students, up until two weeks ago, are in the building full-time. It is, you know, I have to say that I'm fortunate. The staff has really, is tremendous. It is not a traditional learning environment. In a traditional learning environment, we would be doing cooperative learning and moving around the building and doing projects, and those are all things that we can't do when you're six feet apart. It's very difficult. You can't turn and talk to your neighbor about things, but the teachers really have taken it and have made it their own and are really trying hard. I can't even tell you how much they are the most integral part of this whole puzzle, and that the just incredible flexibility that they've shown is remarkable, and it should be commended every day. I have to say, this past, these past two weeks, I was, you know, anytime we have to switch to a remote learning plan, it's a little concerning, but again, the teachers did a remarkable job. Our attendance has been phenomenal. Ms. Layton runs me the attendance every day, and I think the most that we had out in one day was twelve kids, and that's remarkable. So the attendance was great. I popped in some lessons, they were fantastic. You know, and we're trying to hold on to some of the old traditions that we have, like, for example, we did let the kids dress up for Halloween. We didn't have a parade, we didn't have a party, but we know that there are some things in Chatham that are very important, and so we did let the kids come to school in their costumes. I do wanna say that it was advantageous that we were not in school on Monday. As the community knows, there were a large amount of teachers and students that we had to put into quarantine on Monday, and had we been in school, that would have been a little difficult to separate sixty-some people in a safe place and get everybody out of the building safely. So I am comforted that we were not in the building on Monday. You know, I think we're, again, I'm in a different position than Mike and John, and Mike and John feel free to jump in at any time, but I'm in a completely different position than them. I have, you know, I am the lucky one that has the ability to have the students in every day. So, you know, while things are not perfect, they're as good as they can be given the circumstances. And again, I just want to say, oh, two things, very important. I wanna give Travis a shout out because Travis Van Alstine has been amazing. He, you know, as you well know, we've had a learning pod this week, and every time I go down to the cafeteria learning pod, he's in there helping kids, hanging out. He's just been such a positive influence in the entire building, I think in the entire district, since the very beginning. And this is not an easy year for somebody to just step in and do this job, and he's been remarkable. So I wanna give him a shout out, and I just wanna give, again, give the teachers a shout out. They just are, they are doing a remarkable job this year. So I'll let John and Mike jump in, and then I can answer any questions or.
Yeah, I wanna, you know, I agree with Kristen. Yeah, Travis has been awesome, and it's funny, he's like, I don't know if he's like Speedy Gonzales, but I'll, I'll call him on the phone about something, I'll walk out of my office and he's there. He's just, he's, you know, just such a presence, you know, a very friendly with faculty, staff, the students. He's made such great connections with the kids during this hybrid piece, so yeah, big shout out to Travis. You know, we say this all the time, and we say it to our faculties, but we have such phenomenal teachers in our district that, you know, and we hear in the, you know, Abby just spoke a little while ago, and, you know, they're anxious about getting COVID, and they have their fears, yet they're coming every day. They're coming to school. They're doing, going above and beyond for our students, they're learning new things technology-wise. I remember the anxieties when we left last spring, and I knew the anxieties at the beginning of this year. You know, and we were talking about what platform we were gonna use, and just watching them now seem much more comfortable, you know. I was in an art classroom, and Nancy Barth was teaching a lesson, and she was, she was, you almost forget that you have students live streaming in a classroom at the same time. She's working with the kids, and she has her presentation on her pull-down screen, and then all of a sudden, she just seamlessly walks over, and she starts fielding questions from kids at home. And I see this in every classroom, that it's just become, you know, a part of their routine, and I don't think they truly grasp how good they are at it, you know, or they just don't wanna admit it, but you walk in and it's amazing to see. And this, you know, I talk about teachers, but this also goes out to our nurses, who really are, have been just doing anything and everything for the district. Our nurses, our aides, our TAs, our secretaries, everyone's just been doing a great job. I do agree with Kristen, I think, you know, we were, I think it was the right decision Sal made with these last two weeks, and I do feel that the teacher, it was a little sigh of relief on behalf, you know, on the teachers, they seemed a lot more relaxed as things were heating up, so I think that was a good choice. Our attendance has been really good, too, during these remote days, and I, the one thing that, you know, we talked about in our admin meeting today, middle school, high school, we did an hour delay schedule. And the reason why.
We didn't do an hour delay, but.
Oh, you didn't do an hour delay, John?
We have an hour in the middle of the day, but we.
Hour in the middle, oh, that's right. So, and the reason why we chose this hour was so that we could make connections with our kids, to connect with those students that we feel like we've been having issues with attendance-wise. Check-ins, some of the teachers were doing some extra help with the kids to get caught up, but, you know, we've had some positive parent feedback on that. I know that it's one of those things that when you look moving forward at, you know, successes, it's one of those things that I'd love to see moving forward. I'm not saying every day, but a part of the schedule, we have that morning to connect, to connect with kids and families. I feel like families, too, have been very supportive throughout this whole process. I'll let you jump in, John, I'm kinda rambling.
I guess my report is where positivity comes to die, I apologize. I'm not gonna have the same, I'm not gonna have the same, I will, I'll rave about our teachers, our support staff. I'll reiterate that, I think that they are doing amazing work, and I think that they're fighting a losing battle. I'll rave about our kids and our families. I can't believe that, I can't believe how supportive the families I have spoken with have been under incredibly difficult circumstances. I think people recognize that it's an incredibly difficult situation to try to navigate. They've been extremely patient and supportive. At the same time, I think we're all struggling with the fact that we feel like, you know, we feel like we're coming to school to fail every day. That's just the way we feel. I'm just gonna break this down according to my notes, you know. The hybrid, the hybrid model is extremely difficult for all teachers. I think it's incredibly difficult for high school teachers for this reason. We still haven't been let off the hook as far as what our, what our, you know, our final expectations are. We're still preparing for region's exams and high-stake tests, and that's really hard to be, to prepare for that while, you know, you're getting guidance from, from powers that be that say, you know, oh, you don't have to teach all your curriculum, you know, you can prioritize what your curriculum is, but we're still not letting you off the hook for your region's exams. So that's, that's a very difficult position to be in as a teacher. The remote is very difficult on our kids, on our families. It's a little easier, I think, as far as daycare concern at the high school level, probably not as big of an issue, but I've been using this example as I sat in on some senior classes on Friday. I wouldn't wanna go on a diet and put pizzas all over my house, where I could see them and smell them and enjoy, you know. I don't think my diet is gonna, is gonna fare very well in that, in that situation. Kids that are on remote, that's kind of, we're, they have a free pass to escape. It's not the right thing to do, but I think it's understandable when you take all the factors into consideration, what they're dealing with. Kids, kids avoid, kids avoid, it's always been an issue in schools in general, especially if they're in a subject area they don't have a lot of confidence in, they avoid sometimes, and if they dig themselves a hole and they fall behind, they avoid sometimes. If they're here and in person, yeah, we'll have a much higher success rate. Is it still a struggle? Absolutely. But when we don't ever get a chance to really hook into them, and for all types of reasons, fear. People are making choices. I can tell you, my son went remote because he looked me in the eyes and he said, I promise you, I can handle it. I can handle this, and it's gonna be much more enjoyable to me than going to school every day and wearing a mask, and I've got two kids in my class, and it wears on the kids. And so I've been trying to communicate with kids for the last week and a half, two weeks, more so ramping up the communication, and it's tough, it's a tough environment here. It's quiet, it's sterile. It's not, nowhere near as exciting, and you don't see the smiles, and they're not participating in many extracurricular activities. And for all of these people who are holding off making decisions about athletics, I could whisper in their ear and tell them it would be better if they made a decision so people would just know what they're dealing with, because kids just wanna know. So we're having a lot of struggle. We, our failures are three to four times, I will give you some optimistic news. Sixty-seven of those failed, course failures disappeared over the weekend. So a large chunk of kids over the weekend were proactive and put some work in and made up some of those assignments that weren't graded yet, and a large chunk went away today. That's, I'm optimistic about that. We still have quite a few that need to be addressed in the next week and a half. So we're discussing with our faculty, what are some proactive steps? We've been reacting to everything. And unfortunately, in my administrative meetings across the region, nobody has come up with a fix-all, and not a whole lot of even solid ideas, just some, people are just throwing stuff at the wall and hoping that it sticks and taking the good when they can and trying to replicate that, but it's very difficult. Social-emotional concerns, social-emotional concerns. I think we do an outstanding job as a district in this, but as you can imagine, it's more difficult in this scenario. We've got some kids that we're not, that we're not having a high, a high success rate of hooking them in. So I'm thankful to Tracy Kelly and our guidance counselor Travis Van Alstine, who are making home visits and, and, you know, kinda getting out of their comfort zone and to make sure that people are okay and to see if they need things and trying to meet them on their playing field and, but, but social-emotional concerns, again, are a huge issue. And I don't think we, I don't think we truly know what all of the kids are dealing with, you know. I don't think we know all of the kids who are struggling. Why it's so, it's, it's all the more important that we maintain constant communication with them, and it's a struggle. I would say our attendance, by and large, has been okay. I'm not, I can't speak to the quality of that attendance. You know, showing up to a class, to a class meet with your screen off and answering some questions, okay, that, that can constitute a present, but is it really, are they really getting all, all they can out of that, out of that attendance? And there's a lot of good reasons to why, why a student wouldn't wanna turn their screen on. There's a lot of, you know, absolutely understandable situations why a kid wouldn't wanna do that, but again, it provides an escape route. So attendance is a very hard, I can give you, you know, we'll do our report at the end of the quarter about what our attendance rate was, but judging the quality of that attendance as a whole, different story. I think I've given you enough. I think there was, there was two specific questions I just wanted to answer quickly. In terms of, there was, there were some questions about how many teachers are actually coming to the building on a daily basis. I would say that are coming here from the beginning of the day to the end of day, pretty small, three to five. But I would say a larger number than that are in and out, come in and teach a period, or they need to come in and grab their things. In terms of, you know, them showing up to their assignments, it's about a hundred percent. But in terms of coming into the building, probably only three to five on a regular basis, because most people's Wi-Fi is in pretty good shape, and they were prepared for the, they were prepared for the closure, because we had been warning them. I'll leave it at that for now. I've got a lot, you know, I've got, I've got more information here, but I'm happy to answer any questions, concerns, at least I'll make an attempt.
Yeah, I'm just gonna jump into, because I didn't answer that. It's, but, but it's the same at the middle school. A handful of teachers have been in and out, but for the most part, most of the teachers have been working remote. There was also a question about PE. So for PE at the middle school, you know, especially for our remote students, they're still learning the same units of study that the students in person are. So for, for example, when they did soccer, the, our teachers were using Screencastify, they're using EdPuzzles, which are video lessons with narration. They just actually recently started doing, they're called dynamic warm-ups, where everybody's doing warm-ups together, and they're sending Google Forms home, you know, for parents, try to get them a little bit engaged to see if their son or daughter participated in the warm-ups and things at home. So they're, they are learning the same concepts as our students are that are actually participating in some of the more active things like soccer, for example.
I didn't address PE at the elementary school. I knew there was something, I forgot. As far as people coming into the building, it's the same as the middle school, high school. I have a couple of teachers who the Wi-Fi is better in the building, or there are some distractions at home. So they have, every time that we've been remote, they have asked to come into the building. I have other teachers who, you know, this kind of being remote takes away from, for their anxiety when it comes to their own children, who happen to be in other districts who are remote. So, you know, I have a good steady amount of teachers who come into the building, pick up supplies, maybe they teach a, you know, a couple of lessons from their classroom, but it's, I would say it's the same, maybe four to five. As far as PE goes, the elementary school, we're, as you know, we're in full-time. For those students, every encore teacher has a day when they do all their remote lessons, and as far as PE goes, our PE teachers are, have created lessons and/or do fitness videos in a similar presentation. And or do fitness videos in a, in a similar um, presentation as we are right now on a Google classroom. And uh, Mrs. Caldwell or Mr. Rollson will be jumping around and doing whatever the exercises are right with the students. When in person in January, um, they are currently bowling. Um, and what happens is, is everybody gets their own ball. Um, they sanitize the ball. Um, in between classes, they, the ball, the ball sits and there is not another student from a different class. That uses that particular ball the next time around. Um, so basically, everybody's using the same ball, um, their own same ball. Um, and it's been, Mr. Rollson and Mrs. Caldwell are super, super cautious and careful. Um, there's hand sanitizer right outside the gym. You sanitize your hands when you walk in. Every piece of equipment is sanitized and you sanitize your hands as soon as you leave the um, space. Everybody's spread out in the gym, so, uh, you know, we tried not to make our P E in person that much different. Um, they did do a lot of units that are kind of individual units. They, in the beginning of the year, they did a lot of outdoor fitness. They did hurdles, they did obstacle courses, um, things that were not necessarily team sports. But um, I am spending a little extra time with a first grader for the next six weeks. And um, on our walk today, she was telling me how P E is hands down her favorite subject, and she loves to watch Mr. Rollson jump around on the video. So I know it's a very positive experience for the elementary students.
A- and I'll just quickly follow up with the high school, um, a little different. The, the model where the kids are warming up and and participating. Uh, isn't really being practiced at the high school level. It's, it's not a very effective high school model. Um, what we're doing is the kids that are live are actually, are 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 clearly they're, they're here, uh, they participate. So up and almost through, all the way through November, we try to get them outside as much as possible, and we just try to maximize movement. It didn't even necessarily uh, mattered a- a- as much to what the actual activity was. As long as kids were showing up and and maximizing movement and 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 um. You know, if it's the track, if if the most, if we could get a lot of kids that wanted to get around, that wanted to walk the track. We got the kids on the track, we try to have them journal. If there was enough kids to, you know, that we've got, uh, if we've got two teachers on the same period, we had, we had a few weight room activities. And we had some ping pong activities, and the same thing with the sterilization and be, and 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 trying to be um. You know, trying to be safe with that, um, Andy was great with bringing down um, sterilization products. And he took, actually took care of a lot of that for our teachers, which was, which was a huge help. In terms of the remote uh, physical education, to me, phys ed, art and music are. Incredibly important beyond their curriculum. Uh, those are areas where I think you'll find. They have a high percentage of their kids who will actually just engage in conversation and connect. And we've put a lot of, not pressure, I wouldn't say, but I've talked to the art, music and P E folks about, you know, kids. Kids are, are tend to be more passionate about those subjects. And you're probably gonna have to do a little less of a sales pitch sometimes, but. We need to take advantage of, of the positive connection that you have with our kids. We need to, we need to capitalize on that and use it beyond your subject area. So the Google meets for music, for art, for P E. They're almost as valuable just in the connections that they're making with kids. A- a- as the physical activity is, uh, you know, piece of it, or the art piece, or or the playing of music. All those classes, they, they're starting classes and ending classes about discussions about how, how are you guys doing? How are you guys doing? How are your friends doing? Encouraging their friends to, you know, if, if your friend's not showing up to those Google meets, you gotta help them. You, you know, you reach out to them and and having those type of discussions, I find those subject areas are probably. Uh, having the, the highest degree of success with connecting with kids and having positive conversations, um, whi- which is very important for us. The, the kids have been excellent about journaling, the phys ed, Mr. Steltz actually stopped in here this afternoon. And told me that in his opinion, this is the highest degree of kids that he's seen on a formal workout routine since he's been here. And he, he said, it's clear, the conversations that I'm having with them about their journals. And the feedback that I'm giving them, and then they're asking me questions based on my feedback. He said, there's no doubt, we have a higher degree of kids. That are seriously working out in a serious routine than than we've had in quite some time. So if there's some, if there's any positives, you know, we'll take it a- a- and that would be one of them. It, it sounds to me like a lot of kids, uh, probably because of the, the cancellation of, of some athletics. And and just boredom, ha- ha- have, have, have begun to start uh, looking at physical activity. Not just to get in shape physically, but also they see it as a positive outlet for them mentally. Um, and that conversation happens all the time, so I, I apologize, I didn't hit that in the beginning.
No apologies. Good, good, uh. Good recap and um, I have a couple of hands up, uh, Destiny has a question.
Hi, um, first off, thank you guys for doing what you're doing. I, it, it, I couldn't picture a better team to be in, um, not only cuz I've had you guys, but also. Um, just in general, um, also, couple of questions, um. On remote sessions, are kids required to be on screen? Is it a s- school policy or is it a teacher policy? Not at all?
They're not required to at all, and actually, all the guy, all the guidance that we're getting suggests that you really should not do that.
Yeah, okay. Um, and then can you go a little bit more in depth on the one hour thing you mentioned before? Um, so in the middle school, you start at like whenever our homeroom starts an hour delayed, and in the high school, it's an hour in between.
So we, we both wanted to do the hour delay. Um, but with, with Questar, with the C T program, that would negatively impact someone like kid's schedule. But the feeling was, is that's an opportunity for kids to get some extra help. That's a kid, it's an opportunity for teachers to reach out to specific students that they haven't maybe had the same success as far as connecting with them on. It's an hour built into every day. You know, for more in-depth connection. That's the way I think we saw it. Mike, jump in anywhere you want.
Yeah, so when we started the year off, we actually did a two-hour delay.
Right.
Um, and that was, and it, it really, that was up for, a lot of the, a lot of our students had, have, hadn't been up, you know, that early in the morning. Um, for a while, so we were ju- trying to encourage them, you know, it's really like all hands on deck. We've got um, teacher assistants, our aides, our teachers, principals, assistant principals, all of our guidance, um, staff. During that time, you're either meeting with kids, making phone calls to home to encourage them, alright, let's get the day started. Um, some teachers are actually meeting with small groups of kids just as a touch base to get them ready. For the period, and we had success in the beginning of the year, um, the two-hour delay, but we, we felt we didn't need quite that amount of time. Moving forward, we felt that an hour um, was fine, so that, that's why we decided to do it.
We're actually, Destiny, in the middle of looking at possibly uh, replicating that next week when the kids come back in for the end of the quarter. And then possibly taking a look at the second half of the year and 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 even if we are in person. Uh, employing some type of strategy like that to address our, our academic issues.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, we're gonna go to Matt. Matt had his hand up next. Go ahead.
Yeah, I've got, um, I've got two questions. Um, and so I just wanna a- I guess ask them as broadly as I can, and then whoever um, can chime in. And I, I'd love to hear about, um, the, the first thing is, I, I am curious, you know, with, when we are in a fully remote scenario. Are, how effectively are we able to use um, our aide and teacher assistant resources? Are they, are they at full um, full-time, the way they were, and and where are they being used? Um, and I'm sure that differs across, across the buildings. The, the second area, and and this, we could get, this could be a deep rabbit hole, but I would love um. Some surface scratching here, um, John posed this question, or I guess it was an observation about this. Um, anxiety between this contention point or this balance point of. The end of year Regents measurements, which are of course important because they're gonna help us target next year. Interventions, um, or other types of measurements, right? They're not all regions, there's other measurements. And then, you know, on the other side of that is, you know, how do we? How should we cover the curriculum? Well, we've got decreased time and decreased efficiency, and it's unrealistic to cover it all, right? Um, and this is really the biggest question in education, right? What should we be trying to accomplish, right, with reduced efficiency? Um, and we've had very little discussion here at the board level, so I, you know, we could spend hours on that, but um. A few minutes, I think, would be a time well spent, um, and I'll, I'll leave that to whoever wants to answer.
So I, I can, um, I can answer both from my perspective, uh, as far as. As far as the aides and the TAs go, um, we, many of my, many of the aides at the elementary school are one-to-one aides. And so what they do is, is they currently pop into all of the Google classrooms with the students. Um, they are, they are to support students. They go into breakout rooms with students. If a teacher gives an assignment, then they can go into a special Google breakout room and work one-on-one with those students. So the, the, the aides that are one-on-ones are still working with their students, are just doing it from a remote capacity. Those aides that were not one-on-one in our building become one-on-one when we are remote. So what we did was, we kind of said to the teaching staff, um, tell me some people who are really struggling in the beginning of the school year on remote. Who was struggling with staying on task, who was struggling with getting assignments done, and so I got a whole list of them. And then what we did was, we assigned those aides that are like, you know, building aides who don't necessarily work one-on-one with students. We assigned them to specific students, and actually, it's been remarkable. We have one um, aide who's currently assigned with a student. And the teacher said to me, is there any way she can come in the classroom when we come back to live in person, cuz she's been such an asset remotely. So the same goes for our TAs. I use the TAs a little differently, um, in the elementary school. The TAs take more of a. Uh, take more of a um, kind of a teaching role, they uh, at the direction of the teacher. So the teacher may say that the teaching assistant, go, take this group of five kids, go into a breakout room, and I want you to do this, 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 and this. And so it's, it's, it's been very effective. Um, I'm very pleased that we are able to have them um, work remotely with our students. Does that answer your question, Matt, from the elementary perspective? Okay.
Yes, yes.
So as far as the, um, you know, kind of the, how do we feel about academics? And, you know, I have my own personal feeling about um, the whole academic piece. You know, I, 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 I look at it from the leader of the building, I look at it from a former teacher, and I also look at it from a mother who has two middle schoolers. Um, and I. You know, I, I think. We need, I think. And my husband is a social worker, and so one of the things that I've learned clearly is that. We are all in a traumatic situation. This is considered trauma in every sense. Not, not necessarily if you did or did not lose someone to the virus, but just not being in school and not seeing your friends. And, you know, it's all relative, trauma is relative to your own person. And so I think it's very hard to teach and to learn in a traumatic situation. And so what I, what we are doing in the elementary school is, I said to the teachers. I want you for the remainder of the school year to just tell me what you think. The students just need to get through the school year, like what are the essential things that you need? Cuz there's no way that I'm gonna expect you to get through the entire curriculum. So I want you to think about, what are those essential, and actually, we're having all those meetings this week, what are those essential things? That you need from the grade level below you, and the essential things that you know that students you need to get through. And take all the fluff out, take all the stuff that is not, not that it's not important, but during this time, take all the stuff out that is not as crucial. But more important than that, I want you to make sure that we are still creating an environment where kids wanna come to school. Because if that does not happen this year, then moving forward, we're just, we've lost them, and I don't want that to happen. And so, again, I'm in an advantageous situation because I do see the kids full-time. You know, I don't, it's not an every-other-day situation. And so for me, we can try to ma- maintain some of those important things. But I do believe that we are all living through our own personal traumas, and that's very difficult to teach. And I do think, as a society, and this is just me, I think we need to pause. And I need to, I think we need to take a deep breath, and I think we need, need to really evaluate what is important when it comes to school. And what is import, what is not important, and I don't really necessarily think that missing four months of academics is, is. That big of a deal. I think it's more important that our kids are socially and emotionally healthy and enjoy school and wanna go to school. Because if we don't have that now, that's not gonna help when they're in fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, and high school. I think there are essential emotional skills that we need to still work on and build in order for us to, to work on academics. And that's my own phil-, you know, philosophy, that's not something that I necessarily, you know, that John or Mike may share with me or Sal. But that's just my own personal feeling, um, but I do feel like i- in, in our elementary school, working on just what are the essential skills to get us through the year. I feel like that's the most important thing.
Thank you. Do you want me, you jump in, Mike?
Yeah, um, you know, I, same with the aides, um, in our building, um, as, as what Kristen said. And I, and I agree with Kristen, academics, and, you know. One of the things that, um, you know, I think we, we really have to look at is planning on. What, looking at the future, and you know, if it, looking at the fall. Saying, you know, we, we don't know what it's gonna look like. Are we still gonna be in a hybrid situation? Will everyone be able to come back? But to plan that, we can't just. Schools like we used to. You know, I, we have a, um, a lot of students, and what I mean is, we've got a lot of students that. You know, are coming back to the middle school, that haven't been um, live in person. Um, since last spring, and there's a lot of anxiety. Um, and, you know, we're, we're slowly transitioning them back. Now, we're, we're setting up, we've been doing Google meets, um, with the student and the parent, myself and Mr. Stead. And then with the guidance, um, team, then the teachers. And then what we're doing is having like a transition day where they come in, generally a Friday before they would start the following week. Just to kinda get a small tour and kinda feel like they're okay to come back. Um, and and there's gonna be a lot, a lot of that with our students. You know, it's not just, oh, we're open, everybody to come back, it's, we're back in session. And we really have to, as Kristen said, look at the social emotional piece. And, you know, we're also, tomorrow, we're doing our second iReady diagnostic. Um, we're doing it, this is gonna be the first time we're doing a full remote, um, I sent a letter out to all families, asking for, you know, their assistance in this. Um, students have done it remote before, but this is a way for us to see um, growth. That our students have made since the fall in E L A and math. Um, so, you know, to answer kind of Matt's question, you know, we can look, focus on standards. See what um, particular standards our students are doing well in, uh, and what standards they, they're gonna need a little bit more assistance. Um, and, and then, and who's gonna need more intense um, interventions.
Your first question, Matt, about the um, the TAs and the aides, so at the high school, our, our aides. They're coming in, uh, they're doing, our, most of our aides don't really have any, um, you know, educational role. Here in the building, so we've got, our attendance officer is still making calls, you know, helping us with the attendance, making those phone calls. You know, check, checking the daily attendance, uh, h- helping us with that. We've got, um, one of our aides is assigned to the, to the nurse who has a lot going on right now. Um, and is assisting, is assisting the nurse with, um, you know, all of the paperwork. Our nurses are all now working in two different rooms, um, and preparing for the upcoming, uh, potentially the upcoming. Um, testing procedures. Uh, I've got somebody in the library that's helping out with the digital inventory, the ins and the outs, helping kids check out books digitally. So I feel good about that. They're all really performing their duties. I have one TA who I may make a transition proactively to. Working with some kids individually. I think that they have a sh- particular strength that might help us. Um, I'm sorry, aide, um, our TAs are fully incorporated still, they're, they're in their Google meets. Um, they're assign, some of them are assigned specific kids, but by and large, in our building. Um, most of the TAs are in classrooms, and they, not only do they assist the kids who are identified with needs. But they really are just part of the class and are, are another instructor and another assistant in the classroom, so they're still doing that. I will say that I just met with our teacher leaders today in preparation for, you know, bad news. Uh, at the end of the second quarter, and I've let everybody know that we're gonna have to revisit all of those support. Systems that we have in place, um, and we may have to make some adjustments, uh, moving forward. But right now, um, everybody is working, um, I, I, I feel like they're, they're working at a pretty, at a pretty high level. Um, we may have to use some of those aides. It wouldn't be for instruction. It would be more making phone calls and, you know, trying to see if families needed any help with any, uh, you know, with, with any assistance with trying to get their kids connected. Um, in terms of your second question, you know, that's the question. Now, that's, that is the question. That's the question that, uh, we have here internally. That's the, the question that we have in, in, in all of our principal meetings. Um, you know, and I think that answer changes who you talk to, the day you talk to them. Um, I agree with what Kristen is saying. Um, unfortunately, fortunately, I don't know how you say that. And I'll get in trouble for saying this, but I've been around a long time, so it really doesn't matter too much. But I think sometimes we may have a little bit of an elevated, um, uh, uh, an elevated perception of, of what we do. About how, how important it is for my son to learn this subject or that subject or this subject or that subject. I do think that that is important. And I think the buck stops here at my level. You have to pass in order to, to move on. So i- it's, it's part, it's, it's more, it's more intense at this level. But at the same token, I think we need to make sure our kids are okay. I think we need to stay connected with our kids. Um, that's still the priority for me. Um, and I'm concerned about it. I'm concerned that, um, the motivation level is, is extremely low. Um, and I, I, and I don't know how to get, I, I'm have, I'm struggling with getting at that. I, I, and, and, and I think part of that discussion has to be, how much are we throwing at kids? And, and is it, is it realistic for all of them to consume that and digest it? I don't have the answer, but I can assure you, we talk about it an awful lot.
Well, thank you, guys. Um, we're going to move on to, Chris has a question. He had his hand up.
Yeah, thank you. I actually have two, um, just regarding addressing the academic interventions and, uh, social, you know, emotional issues that we've been talking about. And just, just would like to know if, uh, increasing the number of aides or counselors, um, available, you know, if, if that would yield a significant uh, result in, in our students', you know, ability, uh, to, to stay focused and connected in these ways, if that's an option. Uh, and then, um, the second question is, I'm just wondering, you know, if other school districts in the state, uh, you know, do we know, have we connected? Do we know how they are at the moment? You know, rethinking this academic baseline? Um, and I'm just wondering, you know, where this state is, where other school districts are. You know, it might help to sort of reach out and sort of generate a, a consensus as to what's going on.
I, I can tell you that, uh, as far as the second question goes, I can tell you that, um, it's a strange kind of environment. Um, I think in, at least the elementary teachers that I speak to, that I speak to, that are local elementary principals, and also that are prin- principal friends of mine in North Colony and Shenandoah, uh, in Rochester. We all kind of feel the same way. But nobody's really sure. No, everybody's kind of afraid to say it out loud. It's kind of like, okay, if we could all just come together and agree that our students need a little more from us emotionally and a little less pushing of the academics right now, then we could come together as a state, nation, whatever it is, and reconfigure all of these benchmarks and whatever we have. But no one really, we can't really, no one's really prepared to make that decision or can't really make that decision. So then what we usually end up with is, I don't, and I think John and Mike may feel the same way. Is that, I don't know, we're all kind of like, we're all in the same boat, um, you know? People are all over the place. Um, and, and it's just difficult because we have these, um, you know, and, and the other thing is, is that one of the things that's become really clear is that, um, our parents in Chatham care deeply. As John said, we have, you know, I have had tremendous family support. And, uh, but I think that's not necessarily true for all of my friends who teach in different districts. And so they're struggling with something completely different, you know? And so it, it, we're kind of all over the place when it comes to that. And Chris, I don't know if this is really answering your question, and I apologize if it's not. But it, I think we, we, we do talk a lot. Um, I talk to the principal at, um, SCODEC on a pretty regular basis and a couple of friends that I have that, that, um, where, where I live in Voorisville and, and in, um, some of the larger suburban, um, districts near Albany. And we're all, no matter the size, I think we're all struggling with this, that exact question.
We have the same conversations every week. Same issues. Anything new, it's the same topic. Anything new, guys? Did anybody come up with something new? Did anybody, you know, and, and, and we try to share ideas. Um, just not a lot of great solutions. A lot of questions, but not a lot of great solutions, unfortunately. And, and I feel like we have the same conversations internally and externally. We have the same ones and, and people are just struggling with answering them, what, you know, well.
And, and John said something really important in the beginning of his presentation that Mike, John, and I all have these academic expectations when it comes to state assessments and regions hanging over our head. And so when we start to go down this path of like this philosophical, let's, let's meet our kids where they are. And let's, you know, let's provide them with these opportunities to engage emotionally and socially. And then all of a sudden, it's like, don't forget, you got the regions and, and, you know, and you, and they have to get a certain score in order to pass, in order to go to college. And it's kind of this, you know, you're kind of slapped back into the reality of, well, this is, you know, I got to make sure that we're meeting all these standards, even though the standards at some point are pretty much obsolete and unrealistic at this point.
And, and the system was antiquated before we got, before this happened. You know, there, there was significant changes that needed to, that need to take place in education before this happened. So now we're comparing ourselves to an antiquated system that we struggled a little bit with before. And now we're, now we're trying to accomplish those things in, in a much more limited situation, and, and it's an exercise of frustration.
I'm going to get my mask.
Thank you. Um, we have Ted and then, uh, Beth. Ted, go ahead.
Well, before I get going, I want to thank John and Travis and Sal for making me feel more comfortable each one of these meetings. And I'm afraid John missed that, that's okay, he'll get it. Um, in the spirit of the supervisor works for the board and everybody else works for the supervisor, I'd like to compliment Sal for having an environment where staff feels comfortable raising these issues and, and talking, in some cases as harshly, and in other cases as kindly as they have. I'd also like to say that during these talks, I was impressed and encouraged with the reach-out activity that I was hearing, that staff is doing with some of the students. I'd like to also say that, staff, we need your professionalism and we need your humanity. And I'm here asking for myself and the community, and I would suggest the board as well. Keep it up, keep your chin up. While we're experiencing this white-page event, I got to tell you, we've got your back. And before I sign out, here's my question. How can we, as a board, as I sit on the policy committee for many years, how can we strengthen our partnership? The board to the supervisor, the supervisor with the staff, and all of us together, community-wise? Uh, thank you for your time.
Um, I'll just jump in, Ted. Um, I, I, I actually feel like, right now, things are flowing pre- pretty nicely. I think Sal has established, um, a culture here where people can come forward. Um, you know, hopefully we foster that. Um, I know that we certainly feel comfortable coming to Sal, you know, with, with, with anything, with difficult conversations, you know, with any conversations. Um, I don't think, you know, I don't feel like, and that's definitely not the case in every school district. That's something that changes very much district to district. Um, I, I, I feel like Sal has, has created an environment a- and encouraged us to foster that in our buildings that, you know, we're not trying to make decisions in isolation, and we're trying to gain feedback and trying to get input, um, from our faculty and staff and our students. I mean, I think we empower our students, um, probably a little bit more than many districts do also, in terms of wanting to know how they feel and what their, you know, and what their thoughts are. So, um, I feel really good about that, a- and that starts with you guys. Um, you know, I, I think you certainly are welcoming and have encouraged people to speak up a- at, at board meetings. And, um, and you've supported decisions that, uh, you've, you've supported decisions that we've discussed administratively. So personally, I feel like you guys are very supportive.
Yeah, I agree. Everything John said, just by asking that question, um, shows how supportive of a board you are. And, um, we appreciate it, and it, you know, and for teachers to, um, you know, share their concerns, you know, in a public session, or even with us, I think shows, um, that as well.
And w- we've had some difficult conversations in administrative meetings about all of these things. Um, you know, and some, we've put Sal in the hot seat sometimes. I see him smiling, but we have. I mean, we've had some really difficult conversations. But the, I think the advantage that we have is that there's, you know, we all understand that the bottom line is, um, we all understand that our, our job is to make sure that we have a strong environment for students. And we, we all row in that same direction. I just want to say one thing that I forgot to say in the beginning. The one thing that, uh, aside from just the hard, how much hard work our teachers and staff put in, I have to say the other thing that I'm truly impressed by is I know they're all anxious, but you don't see that when they're teaching. You don't see that when they're interacting with kids. They are, they're, you know, you, I know it from talking to them. I know it because they come in my office and they'll, you know, sometimes need to be uh, uh, let out a little emotions and, and, you know, or say, I need to go for a walk or whatever it may be. But when they're in front of the class or in front of the camera or, or walking with students to, to and from wherever it may be, the nurse's office, they are completely in control like they've been. They are kind, loving people, and, you know, they, I, I think that they are putting on a really good face for our students. And it's, it's, it's very admirable. And I forgot to say that in the beginning, but I wanted to make sure I slipped that in.
Chris, I just wanted to circle back around because I thought you asked a really important question. I don't think we answered it with the, in terms of our staffing for support. This is, I'm speaking completely, just my opinion here. I, I don't think this would be the time right now to add because I think we need somebody that's going to work with these kids and these families that has money in the bank with them to, to, to come up with something, to, to come up with a new face or a new, you know, and a new voice in the conversation. Under these circumstances, I think would be very difficult for students and for families to, to react to and to get engaged in. Um, I think what really we need to do, and I think we're doing it, is, is evaluating what we're doing, how we're doing it, and is there more efficiencies that we can put in place in the system? And I think we're doing that. Um, but I think that needs to, we need to kind of, we need to finish that process, um, before we can, you know, we can think about more different, if that makes sense to you.
Yes, thank you, that does. Thank you, uh, Beth, you have a question or comment? Beth?
I was trying to unmute myself, and I want to wait for a second. Okay, um, my question seems like ancient now. But when Kristen, when you were talking before about, um, how you revamped and kind of tweaked the, um, the expectations, is this similar to what you did? I remember way back at the beginning of the year, year, where you would kind of take in some of the year-before's expectations and bump them into the beginning of the year's expectations. Is this what we're doing now for the second half of the year?
Well, so just to be fair, we haven't started. So the teacher, we have, I have my first team meeting, um, tomorrow. And the two things on the agenda are, what do you need from the grade level before, below you? So like, what does kinder, what does first grade need from kindergarten? Um, and what do you know you need to get through for the end of the year? And then what we're going to do is we're just going to look at the, all the things that they need to do, that they know that they need to do comfortably to send their student on to the next grade level. And what do they need, what are the essential skills that they need from the grade level below them? So those are going to be our conversations. Uh, my first team meeting is tomorrow with kindergarten. And, you know, they don't have anyone below them. So they're kind of, you know, they're in a totally different situation. But I think at this point, it's kind of like a, um, how are we going to just get through and make sure that we have some kind of salvageable year, um, and, and can send our students on to the next grade level? Uh, you know, I'm very worried, um, as you know, Beth, being a former primary teacher, the essential building blocks of literacy happen in K-1, 2. And that happens through so many different styles of learning and teaching that we can't do right now. We can't do cooperative learning. We can't sit on the floor with letter puzzles and, and do all those things that we've done in, in the past. And so the teaching has become very, I don't want to say like, you know, eighteen-hundred kind of sitting in rows and, 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 you know, very rote. And it, that's just not how kids learn. And so what we're going to really try to focus on is what are those essential things that they need to know before the end of the school year?
Because I know that's kind of what you did last August.
Yeah, we kind of sat down and said, okay, listen, from March to June, we had like a really rough year. So, so what were the things that didn't get covered that you know the next grade level absolutely needs to cover in the beginning of the school year? And so we're kind of doing the same thing. It's like a January touch base. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
I wanted to chime in for just a second on that. Um, also, you know, um, Lisa, being new to the district, is also helping the administrative team, um, kind of take a, take a look at what envision, take a look at and envision what the second half of the year can look like. And facilitating conversations with the principals and, uh, among the, um, uh, teacher leaders as well. Um, I think she could be kind of the glue that kind of helps us, um, take a look at this system-wide. Lisa, I don't, you know, I know we're, I think this is an important conversation. And I didn't know, and don't mean to put you on the spot, if you wanted to just kind of, um, uh, you know, share with us your, you know, some of the work that you've been doing recently.
Sure, so, uh, first and foremost, I just want to start off by saying that there are some very, very special things happening at Chatham. So me stepping into Chatham knew, um, I'm trying very, to be very mindful about understanding context and understanding what's happening. And also trying to take as much time as I can to understand each leader in each building because they're absolutely critical and pivotal in, in what we do moving forward. Um, and there are some tremendous things that are happening, especially with it, systems that are already in place, like our teacher leaders. Um, stepping into our teacher leaders, um, in our professional development committees, the, um, the amount of, of energy and professionalism that teachers are bringing forth and, and putting their time into really thinking about things. Um, and offering their expertise to others is, is really tremendous. And it's something that is, is special, and I don't think you see that in, in many districts. So we, uh, m- my initial impression is that we are struggling with some things that every single school district in New York State is struggling with. But where I'm first and foremost trying to focus on is what, what have we learned? What have we learned since last spring? And what have we learned during this first half of the year? And that we put plans in place to open up school based on our experience, based on what we know, based on consulting, based on everything, right? But what do we know now? And what do we want to keep? And what do we want to, um, say? This isn't Chatham, this isn't what's, what we value and what's important to us. So I'm trying to direct conversations a couple ways and really, um, getting back to what we believe as educators and what we believe as part of the community is Chatham, is what's important to us. And when we think about our graduates and the skill sets that our graduates have, um, yes, our region scores are important and the standardized state scores are important. But what I believe is more important is what, what we say we want our graduates, the skills we want our graduates to have, and we want our graduates to look like. And I, and I think that there's a lot of noise right now. Um, and the principals are doing a tremendous job in everyday operations. Um, the everyday operations in COVID is, um, it's, it's just hard to put into words what, what happens to a principal, um, you know, when you're faced with that. And then when you, and then when you want to put on top of it, um, how do we filter the noise for teachers? How do we tell? How do we filter the noise for teachers? How do we tell teachers? We would like you to focus on this because this is what's important to Chatham. So we've been having conversations about. The second half of the year and trying to focus on our expectations and what success looks like in our second half of the year. I've been having those conversations with principals. Um, I've been having those conversations. I've started those conversations with families. Um, and I'll open those conversations up to some. Hopefully we have some community forums and some student forums where we look at what schooling looks like because this is, we're. We're all struggling right now, but I look at this as an opportunity as well that we have some latitude to change. Um, and I'd like to be mindful and meaningful about what that change is. The last piece I want to add to this is, um. You know, so it, well, before my last piece is that I'm really mindful right now about trying to get to know. Our, our leadership team, um, and thinking about how to best support them in their leadership role. Um, and where their strengths are. Um, and I'm also working on partnerships with some of our universities to. Look at how can we have research-based practice and how can we bring some university. Liaisons in with continuous change, because if we're talking about continuous change and innovation. We have the perfect context right now for that. So, um. There's some tremendous work that started. I've, I've only been at Chatham for a, a little bit, but everyone's been extremely receptive and. Um, might I say tolerant of some of my philosophical ideals on this, um. And knowing that everyone's really, really tired, um, but the overall. Hurt and passion and wanting to not just survive this, but to excel in this environment is, is very evident. So. Um, trying to be mindful about taking the time to learn from everybody, but, um, also. Working to provide some timely direction as well.
Thank you, Lisa. I think there was still a hand up.
Thank you. Uh, Matt, I don't know if he's, uh.
You know, I, I had my hand up and down. Um, just quick comment here, um, you know, just from the board perspective. Cause it sounds like you, you know, in, in the district, um, inside the buildings, we're getting some, maybe not consensus, but definitely wide agreement on. Areas of change, right? Areas of deficiency. Um. You know, as a community stakeholder and as a board member, um, I'm in full support of, of what everyone thinks. We should be doing what is right. And I, I think, um, worrying about making mistakes here. Um, is we, we don't have the, um. We don't have the ability to worry about mistakes. There's a huge opportunity cost on the table. Um, so. Um, you know, we, we cannot wait five years for the, um, the state regents, how to survive a pandemic, um. In academic triage mode, guidebook. Um. Meanwhile, you're all discussing stuff and I, you know, I, I, I hesitate, um. To, um, hesitate is the wrong word. Um, I'm sorry to hear that where people think they, um. There's, uh, agreement on the right direction to be moving, we're waiting for the state. Or we're waiting for other districts to move first. Meanwhile, the, the, the information, what's right, what needs to happen, it's going to be ground truth. Right in front of you, right? It will take months or years to get those same truths out of the state. Um, so, um, that, that's how I feel about this subject and, um. You know, I, I'm, it's great hearing that, you know, these retrospectives that are happening at the mid-year point are, are netting some, uh, some innovation here.
Thank you. I, I think we can, uh, I, I really appreciate you guys, uh, coming on tonight. I mean, uh, Kristen, Matt, John. Not only can we see it, we hear it, uh, we feel for you. We know you're, uh. Doing the best you can and, uh, we're all a part of this big family, but my glass is, uh, always half full and. I think we're, uh, Chatham's going to, uh, come out of this pretty well. One of the things that, uh, I know that, uh. You guys probably aren't thinking about, you're thinking about years past and where you're supposed to be at this time, but, uh. No, I think there's a new valuable lesson being taught to all our students and all our teachers and all our administrators. Um, that we don't even know about yet. And I think it's going to be huge going into the future. Um, you know, these are big lessons we're not aware of and, but I think they're going to be, uh. Um, powerful and we always talk about, uh, college and career readiness. I don't, you know, even these, uh, meetings, it's college and career readiness for the future. Um, and, and the classes during the day with how the teachers are teaching them. How the students are receptive to them. It's college and career readiness. In the future and, you know, I want to thank you all and I know everybody's giving a hundred and ten percent and. You know, uh, John, I see it on your face, uh, made a comment, buck stops here. Yeah, you're, you're the one that gets to hand out that, uh, diploma. I, I think, I think we're going to be surprised and, and, and I can guarantee you. Nobody on this board is going to be disappointed in, in you guys and hopefully our parents and our, uh, students feel the same way. Uh, this is a trying time and I think Chad is doing a superb job. So keep up. Keep on keeping on. You guys, uh, you know, uh, we, it's obvious that you have full board support and, um. And I can, I can promise you that. So, uh, I, I really appreciate teachers speaking out. And, uh, I, I want this openness, uh, that we have is a powerful thing and it's, it's, uh. Really going to help us in the future. So.
Thank you for your support as well. Thank you.
Craig, you have a couple more hands up, but I, I wanted to just also just first take a second to personally thank the, um, principals. Uh, you know, it's, it, we can't say it enough. So I would like to thank the folks here and also, you know, a shout out to our APs. We have a great. Team of support behind our principals in, uh, in Justin, uh, Brett and, and Mike Sted. So, uh, you know. They, they have good teammates behind them as well. So shout out to the entire, uh, you know, we've got, and we can't leave Brian out of there in special ed. I don't know if he's on tonight, but you know, we appreciate everything that the whole administrative team is doing.
Muriel, you have a comment?
Yes, um. A blonde lady knocked on my window. So I, I invited her in to watch our meeting. Is that okay with you, Craig?
I, I'm very happy Denise. You're welcome here too.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you guys. Um, we're going to move on to Travis. I don't know if we need to, because I think I counted. Five salutes after Travis.
I want to take a second to introduce, you know, uh, the board had asked Travis stopped in and introduced himself when he first started. The board had asked for him to come back at some point in the school year. Um, evidently, um, I didn't get the same amount of cash on my desk that the principals did this morning.
I was wondering, I was wondering about that.
My envelope must be missing somewhere, uh, but you know, I would also be remiss that, um, you know, sure, making it a short story. We hit a home run. And, uh, I'd love to just have him share with you some of his viewpoints, uh, you know, now that he's also here mid-year.
Well, I just want to say a good, good evening to everybody. Um, I know, uh, this has been a very difficult year for everybody. You know, as, as far as my role here, you know, number one is my, is safety, um, but I think it's more than that. So, you know, at the beginning of the year, you know, I kind of hit the ground running. I wanted to make sure that I was, uh. Um, visible to the students and staff. I wanted to make sure I was approachable and engaged. Um, and I think everybody from the administration to the teachers, the students have been, uh, very welcoming to that. My, my day, you know, consists of, uh, trying to equally split my time up between all three schools. Um, there are times when, you know, the one, the school may, uh, need me more than others in, but, um. I've been able to, uh, get into all three schools and, and really get, get, engage as far as, um, getting into the classrooms. I've been able to, uh, to go into the pre-K, read, read stories to them. I've been in the, been helping every Friday teach the dare classes to the fifth grade, fifth graders. Um, moving on to the, the middle school, I've, uh, helped with the eighth grade mock career interviews, uh, that. Occurred last month and at the end of this month, I'll be, uh, doing the second half of the eighth graders. Um, Mr. Loomis, uh, invited me into his, uh, high school, um, classroom and, uh. One of the, uh, high seniors asked me to come and speak on. On topic for law enforcement. So I was able to go in there and, and talk about, you know. The career, how to get into the career of law enforcement, what it takes, and then some other, uh, topics that they wanted to discuss about. And then, you know, on top of that, I've been able to really, um, sit down with the administrators and, and get involved with the administrators and the guidance. And, and, and help them out in any way possible and help, uh, alleviate some of the stress on their shoulders. Uh, I've been. Going out to the residents of families in the school district by helping either what, one, it's delivering school material to them. You know, two, sending, uh, helping bring, um, repaired Chromebooks out to them, power cords. Uh, the nutritional bags, uh, any way possible, because I want, not only do I want to be engaged and visible to the kids in school, I want to make sure that the ones at home that are remote. Uh, know who I am and I want the parents to know who I am as well. Um, I think that this year has been very positive given the circumstances and I, I can't wait to continue to move forward and help any way I can.
Any board members have any questions or comments for Travis? I, I think the, uh, building heads all really hyped you up pretty good Travis and, uh. I think I may have seen a slipped video of you participating in the P A, P E. I, I'm not positive if it was you, but, uh, congratulations and.
Yeah, I've been working on my bowling. It's, it's been going good.
Um, and, and, and thank you for, uh, taking over the mock interviews.
Yes.
That was my job for many years.
It's been good. The kids are very creative. I mean, they're, they got great mindsets, you know, looking forward to the future.
That was a lot of fun. Any, uh, well, um, thank you. Thank you once again for helping us out so much Travis and keep up the good work. We're going to move on. Nobody has any comments or questions for Travis? We'll, uh, go to, uh, superintendent's report. All right.
And Travis, I know you have, you have an early morning as do the principals. So don't feel obligated like you have to stick around. You can. You can exit at your convenience.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I just, you know, been here now four years and, um, I, I don't know, the, tonight struck me as one of the, um. Uh, more engage, not more engaging, but ju- just an amazing conversation among the administrative team and the board. Um, and, and a very, very open dialogue, very, um, very honest and authentic. And I, I just, it's, I don't know if we. Um, we take the opportunity to do that often enough, but, uh, certainly appreciated. Um, you know. Anytime you thank anybody, you inevitably leave people off. Um, so you know, we've, we've done a real, a couple of comments just. Before I talk a little bit more about the things I had planned for tonight and I'm much more organized than last week. I actually put my slides in order. Um. But first and foremost, um, we learned a lot early on by not only going, having a more untraditional opening with going remote. That served us well, but also some of those little, um, curveballs along the way, like our cyber attacks and our electrical issues. Really, um, helped us look, uh, introspectively at things that you've asked tonight about. Um, how are we utilizing teaching assistants? How are we use like utilizing classroom aids? Um, I think the teaching assistant piece was a little more straightforward because typically they are, uh, instructionally focused and. Uh, often tied to, to students. So that was a little bit easier, but you know, I can tell you that I was good with, with a high degree of confidence. That the, um, building level leadership has worked hard in terms of, um, you know, visualizing how we could leverage our classroom aids, um, and. When possible, have them have an instructional focus to benefit students and when not, how could they further support? As you've heard, things like the nurses and other activities that are going on. That was, that was a work in progress and I think, you know, we, we, we can be proud of the fact that. Now we've really hit a good stride in terms of that. Also, um, I'd be remiss and I'm going to talk a little bit about the learning support that we created. Uh, our transportation department, um, you know, a shout out to them, those folks, um, not only have, um, assisted us. Uh, in the spring and, and throughout the fall and, and have been like all of us throwing curveballs with some routes going, some routes now, not. But when we asked them to also help us augment and supplement, um, our plan to have some learning support for two weeks. To assist parents who were not able to provide, um, uh, childcare, uh, for their students. Uh, they've also didn't hesitate in, in stepping up. So it's at every level and nook and cranny of the organization. Uh, and again, we'll probably leave someone out, but, uh, it unilateral thank you to the entire organization, no matter what. Your role is, um, is very valuable, uh, to, to this district's effort. So thank you. Uh, with that said, I'm going to, uh, share out my screen so I can be a little bit more organized, uh, in terms of. The presentation. Again, most of my comments are an update in terms of just where we are with, with COVID and kind of where we're going. Um, I pulled some slides just a couple of hours ago, just to give us some perspective. Um, I actually pulled, uh. This is a slide from yesterday showing data from Sunday, Monday, um, kind of along the lines of what Abby mentioned. Um, you know, Columbia County has enjoyed some lower than average, um, positivity rates, uh, in recent months, but again, we. Uh, and there's no pride in this, we're catching up. Uh, yesterday, um, there were thirty-five, uh, new positive cases, um. And we had a rolling average of seven point seven today, um, sixty-three new positive cases. Um, almost a 10% positivity rate for the day and, and now surprisingly up and maybe one of the first times that we've actually exceeded Albany, Green and Rensselaer counties. I think that's the first time we've exceeded all three of them. So, uh, certainly, um, we, we're, we're vigilant of this and we're keeping our eyes on this. It's a very important metric. As you know, uh, from previous conversations, I have a weekly meeting with the department health. That'll take place again tomorrow and I'm real anxious to see what Jack Mav and his team, uh, have to say about what's going on in the county. And then every other week, we, that same, uh, subsection of that same group meets with our nurses, um, in the region and. That also is taking place tomorrow. Um, just kind of a snapshot I put together just a little while ago. Uh, in the past, I've showed you a snapshot that really took us back from September to, um, present time. This is just. Of what's going on, um, as of, as of today. Uh, it's broken down by building. Um, I broke it down by student and staff. The Q are those, um, student and staff that are in quarantine. The T is, are those students and staff that are aware of, that are, um, have been tested and are waiting for results. And the P are those confirmed positives or presumed positives. When it comes to presumed positives, uh, that's something that's a designation, just, just. Designation that the county makes based on criteria where, uh, it's inevitable by a person being the only one in their entire household who, who isn't been tested positive. But is showing symptoms, they don't even bother suggesting that that person get tested. They, they presume a positive. So as you look. Um, you know, this look, this picture is, as Kristen alluded to a week ago, Monday, um, was much more dramatic at one point. Um, and my numbers might be off by a few, but, uh, at, at one count, we had sixty-five students and I think nineteen staff under quarantine. Um, we had proactively shut down on that previous Friday, but, uh, as Kristen also alluded to, chances are, um. That we weren't opening up, uh, most of last week, if last week at all with those kinds of numbers. Um, though, most of those folks came off quarantine on Saturday and right now the snapshot is, you know, um. Is what, what you see in front of you. Uh, again. Something that we monitor on, on a daily basis. Moving over, um, we've had a lot of conversations in the last few months on, on designations of zones. Um, I don't have a lot. Of new information to update, but to just reinforce that it does appear that really the critical metric that the, that the governor. Is really relying on is hospital capacity. Uh, he has said numerous times in the last few weeks that. If the region were to hit a capacity of less than fifteen percent, um, that would, um, uh. Probably be what triggers that area going into a designation of a zone. As you can see by these metrics that I pulled just a little while ago, um, and I'm not certain whether he's using an aggregate of hospital beds and ICU beds. But as you can see right now, um, there's about a twenty-five percent capacity with normal hospital beds and about a nineteen percent. Capacity with ICU. That number continues to, um, to. That number continues to diminish, and it is pretty significantly small in the capital region compared to some other parts of the state. So that's something that we also keep an eye on, and I wanted to update you on. So this is interesting. This has been an ongoing conversation, and and as of Friday, I can give you a little bit more information. Matt, this is something that you've brought up on on numerous occasions. Actually, you brought it up on December twenty second. And thus, we made our initial inquiry on the twenty third. And I haven't really been able to give you a really clear answer. I did get a communication from Craig Hansen, the Director of Health and Safety at Questar Three on Friday, who said, I think I have an answer to testing outside the zones. We've been, the Columbia County and the Questar Superintendent somewhat frustrated by the media attention over Albany and Bethlehem being able to do surveillance testing. But this is what he had said. He wasn't, he was not getting a formal response to his request for more information about whether schools could go ahead and do that. So he tried another approach. He actually sent in a separate request in addition to the test kits that he already has specifically for the purpose and sole purpose of doing surveillance testing. And as you can see by these notes, they declined that request. He followed up with a phone call to Wadsworth Lab, and they basically told him that they aren't sending out any more test kits to anyone unless they're in a designated zone. And that he, they did suggest that they could use the supply that any entity had, but they would not be restocked. And that he, they were told by the state that, again, they would not be shipped unless they were in a zone. So that may provide just a little clearer picture. Along those same lines, he he went to a different source and found that indeed, the reason that a couple of school districts in the Albany County, in Albany County are be are publicly able to do some surveillance testing is because the county has offered them some of the test kits that they have available to them. So that that's kind of an update on surveillance testing. Testing in general is a little is a little different than what we had envisioned. You know, my last report to you was that our nurses have gone ahead and been tested or had gone, had done their training. We've also had the health and safety people come out and watch them do some swabbing and 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 certification that they could provide these tests. But one of the things that we also learned is these, these Binax now test kits are antigen test kits. And if you have done any research on on the vaccine, the vaccine is a vaccine that kind of tricks your body into producing antibodies to the virus and thus will react to testing. So in other words, if you, if you receive the vaccine, I'm going to give you a little update as to where we are with our staff in a moment. They do not recommend that you get tested for ninety days, at least using the antigen test, the rapid test, because they could give you a false positive. The only test that's suitable at that point would be the one test, the PCR test that we talked about, which is the test that tests for the viral, the presence of the the actual virus in your system. So, you know, we, we spent a lot of time figuring out and asking staff if they would volunteer voluntarily submit to some some testing, should we get into a testing program? You know, there, if we did get into a designation of a zone, there's talk about having to test twenty percent of the people over a two week period. Well, as as more and more our staff get vaccinated, that does impact those who might be available for testing purposes. So just wanted to pass that along along to you. So if you've had the virus or you've had the vaccine, they don't suggest that you get a rapid test within ninety days. The last piece, we did just a little informal building survey. This is in no way maybe perfect, but just to gauge a sense, as you know, and I had had heard earlier, we've been pretty transparent in terms of our communication with staff. When information becomes available, I think we're, you know, among the, among the districts who have in an expeditious way got that information out to staff. And because of that, you know, at least a small subset of our staff have been able to make appointments. It's not significant by any means, but in a lot of cases, it's more than than some of our our local colleagues. You can see the numbers in front of you, twenty eight, fifteen, thirteen, those are staff and or those are, those are employees, not necessarily just teachers. We we did during the first couple of days of availability, made sure that our nurses and those who might be involved in any testing regimen or testing protocols, they received a vaccine. So we're in really good shape with that group. So about fifty six to date, we also were reported that about nine others have appointments for some time in the near future, but have not been necessarily vaccinated yet. We also, you you would have received a communication within the last week or so. I thought it was real important that we support this public health initiative, and we checked with legal, but we, you know, we were able to provide our staff with ninety minutes of administrative leave to support their receiving of the vaccination, and I think that was well received by the staff. Not all districts have done that. Just, you know, again, a shout out, this, this slide was intended to remind me to shout out about to to Kristen and Brett and those who helped organize this, this next version of what we call learning support. I hate to call it childcare because we're doing sometimes more than that. Students are, students are able to come and participate in the program. The two weeks that we were fully remote, with the exception of the holiday yesterday, parents had the flexibility to drop students off anytime in that window, pick them up. We are using both the cafeteria and the gymnasium. As you can see, students are properly socially distanced and, you know, wearing masks except when they're eating their lunch. Barb is providing nutrition, lunch and and breakfast for those who choose to participate. On the right hand side, and she's still on, a shout out to 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 Abby, I I had taken a picture of a student participating in a, I actually thought it was a physical education class because the student had headphones on and was jumping around, and I came around to take a picture of the screen, and it was Abby fully engaging her, her students in in a music class. And you can see, I, I think there's, there's something about these two photos that tell the story. The young lady on the left, as I was sharing with Pat Wilson today, she's smiling, and you can tell even because she has her mask on, she's smiling. And then the young lady in the middle of the squares there with with the biggest smile on her face as well. So again, that that program is going very well. Yeah, I think parents who were were kind of in a jam really appreciate that we we put the, made the extra effort to try to address some of their some of the barriers during this time. So we'll look to next week is the big question, and I, and I certainly respect the comments that were made earlier. And many factors will have gone into the decision to close the last two weeks. And will, and will yet again go into the decision that we will make for next Monday. As of tonight, you've looked at some of the numbers. Most of our counterparts in the region are in are operational. There's some exceptions in terms of grade levels and and buildings, but for the most part, I think at this point, it's very likely that we will open, given the current conditions, back to in-person instruction beginning on Monday. But I say that with caution. You heard many times tonight that a few cases, a large number of quarantine, any can, anything can tip the scale back to needing to close for next week. But I think it's important because two other factors probably are not going to be in place. We are not going to have enough of our staff vaccinated over the next few months to wait this out a week at a time, a week at a time, where that's going to make any large amount of dis- of difference. And I I just don't think we can stay closed unless the conditions warrant that. So my, my recommendation right now is that we will reopen on Monday as we had planned. But again, again, we're monitoring that situation on a daily basis. For those parents who are watching, you know, just reiterating the fact that we don't make these, we don't take these decisions lightly with great trepidation do we make them, and that we don't, and we try to give them as much advance notice as possible. Sometimes that is not the case. We are going to this weekend, our communications remind parents of that. We have several examples regionally of where, you know, one school last week received information about a case at eight AM in the morning, and by nine thirty, they had to do an early dismissal. That's probably the a parent's worst nightmare, but it is the nature of what's going on in our response to COVID in schools. So that's kind of my report. And again, I see some hands up, so I am more than happy to answer some questions. I'll turn it back over to Craig.
Matt, you have a question for Sal?
Yep, two, I promise it's going to be faster than the last batch. The response we got back from State DOH on surveillance testing, obviously, they simply don't have enough tests to go around and they're triaging with their cluster zones. It seems like our, as a community, our tolerance to the risk of increased COVID cases is probably going to continue to be lower than the state's designation for a cluster zone. So with that, with that known, you know, we have this batch of sixteen thousand tests sitting over at Bosse's, I believe that was the number. Does that New York State guidance impact our access to those tests if if we can incorporate it into a safety plan or risk mitigation plan? Or is it really up to the the Bosse's members? How those tests would get used? So that's, that's one. And then the second one, I know you did a survey, and I I guess just broadly, I'm curious what the, you know, in terms of the stakeholder, the staff and other stakeholders that 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 filled out the survey on their receptivity to testing, but also to are they seeking a vaccine? Are they receptive to a vaccine? I'm curious where we're sitting with those numbers. Just broad percentages.
So while the answer to your first one, and then I gotta bring up a, a, a resource on my screen to to get you those latest numbers. That would seem to be the most logical next question that I can ask Craig tomorrow. If the, you know, initially, they wanted something like twenty some odd thousand tests, they were given half what they asked for. If you follow your logic, some of those tests, quote unquote, would would have been earmarked for chat. I mean, should we decide that we would like to have access to them for purposes other than the zone, would the L S L as Bosse's, would they allow us to do that? I think that's a good first question to ask. Then we could decide whether we wanted to take our allotment and perhaps use it for that purpose, or does that put us in any? Does that put us at a disadvantage? Should we become a zone? It would almost seem like it would not, because if we became a zone, they may have access to more tests. I don't know the answer to that, but I'm more than willing to find out. I don't think it has been asked previously. And then, while I'm stalling for a second to bring up some metrics. We did, as you mentioned, we did survey the staff. That survey was open for several days. We did shut the survey down, and I believe in one of the emails to the board, you will have already seen this, these results. So of the two hundred and thirty four responses, of, and the question was if a vaccine, if vaccinations are available through the district, and I assume you can, you can generalize that and say available through the district or available. Are you interested in receiving one? When we wrote that question, we were actually, it was prior to the governor adding teachers to Phase One B, and we were in conversations with the local Department of Health as to whether we could potentially facilitate a local pod. And these numbers were being sought so that we could inform some of the the decisions in terms of how much vaccine they would need if we were to embark in a program like that. I will tell you that, and I'm going to do quick math here, that's a five point four, eighty five point four percent of those surveyed said they would be willing to receive or may be willing to receive. About sixty five percent said yes, and about twenty, almost twenty one percent said maybe. So, and that, as I had reported to you, trended almost precisely to the half a dozen other districts superintendents who had reported surveying their staff. About eighty five percent of the staffs that were surveyed in other districts in the Questar region seem to indicate willingness to be vaccinated. And so hopefully, that's, that's what you'd ask. And then at that time, we asked if we were to have a testing program, would you volunteer to be part of a random testing program? And at that point, that was just a yes, no response. Seventy seventy seven percent, seventy six point nine percent said yes, they would. So there seemed to be a very high indication that there was a willingness to participate in a testing program. What we have not done yet, because I didn't want to over survey, is if we get closer to a testing program, we're going to then have to juxtapose those who are willing to be tested with those that have received the vaccine so that we can, we can, you know, subtract them from the equation to determine, determine who actually would be who would make sense to to test. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Destiny, you have a question?
Yeah, in relation to testing, how we reached the twenty percent consent for parents with students for testing yet?
Yeah, let me pull that number up. That's a different. So again, I'm working on numbers that are maybe about a week old. When we showed you the chart, we needed roughly in terms of twenty percent of the students, and remember, the metric was in person, we needed a hundred and thirty three. And the way this, this survey works, it's a little different than the staff survey that was shut down. This is the one that I reported to you. We're using the same platform as we do the daily COVID screening. The way this platform works is it sends the survey out. And it, and may maybe in some ways annoyingly sends it out to the group until you respond one way or the other. So as I sort by response date, even though the survey has been out, I think since the fifth of January, we received three responses today and nine responses yesterday. I said, because people were home, they they saw it and they responded to it. And when I say responses, I mean, I meant positive responses. So with that said, drum roll, just got to let the system do it total. The number of parents who have given consent is now two hundred and ninety seven. So and and that's of those students who would be they're not the remote students. Although there's a couple in there that moved from in-person to remote, so it's, it's not, it's not a hundred percent accurate, but a very good indication. And as we got closer, we'd have to reconcile that list. But according, I guess it's a long-winded answer to your question. We would probably have a sufficient number of participants to be able to test from a student perspective. And of course, I think you heard Abby mention it too, although we had sent that link out for vaccinations, that that link got sent out like a day, even the same day or the day after, we had already quarantined sixty five students and nineteen teachers. So if you are in a quarantine, you can't, you're not eligible for coming in to be tested or to to go get your vaccination. So when I say that number, depending on the circumstances, that number may be impacted by some of those conditions. Hopefully, that wasn't too confusing.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Sal?
I've got one more comment.
Go ahead, Matt.
Probably should have done this during board comment. Very excited to hear that our emergency claim for the electrical was was accepted in full, so.
Yes. Thank, thank you, Mike Chetty, for pursuing that.
Yeah, and and so we haven't had a chance of getting, get that out to the general public. So for those who are attendees, we are very pleased to find out that last Friday, our insurance carrier covered the entire incident related to the electrical problem at the high school minus our deductible. So we are, we are very, very pleased with that. That notification, so. Thank you, Matt.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Sal? I see none. All right, we're gonna move along. R thirty nine, be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the consensus agenda G through I as written. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. Items for future agenda. Anything out there? Covering everything good? Destiny has her hand up.
I promise I'll be quick. I just didn't want to get lost. I know Mrs. Chittenden mentioned at the last board meeting the liaison committee that we had in the past to kind of connect teachers and to facilitate more communication. I don't I don't know exactly what she said, but I think that might be a good, um, thing to do, maybe not this year, but fall of twenty,
We.
Twenty-one, yeah.
We actually have a liaison committee that me and Muriel, uh, are on and.
Oh, that was that a different thing than she said, or was that?
No, no, she just hasn't. She's just, uh, um, we haven't had the, uh, opportunity or the o, open or the need. Ho- hopefully, I want to believe we haven't had the need for them to call on us. But, um, this has existed, uh, for a long time. Um, and, uh, I hope that, you know, I want everybody to know that we're there. But this venue, this, the way it's open and then I'm going to give everybody a, an opportunity to speak again here in public comment. But this is really, in my opinion, been, um, you know, incredible last couple of months that, of, um, openness, sharing. So hopefully, uh, this is all we need to do, but, um, I do want everybody to know that we are there. And, uh, we've been named on that committee for quite some time and, uh, you know, it's, uh, we, we do have a, a good chain of command. We have good building leaders and a great superintendent. But you know, if that's not, hasn't been satisfying to a group or a person or anybody, we are here. And, uh, also I think we're in a, a pretty good environment amongst all of us, uh, uh, right now that, uh, this is a great venue to, uh, to open up any questions and concerns. You know, Abby speaking out earlier, that, that's very important and it's noted. And, uh, certainly the last meeting really opened a, a bunch of our eyes to have that dialogue and to, uh, have the, um, the pause that we've had. So, uh, I want everybody to know that, uh, these questions and concerns and comments, uh, have been acted on and, uh, are very important to all of us. Uh, as, you know, as well as you guys, uh, it means a lot to us. These are some questions that we've had as a board in the, uh, past and, uh, it's been very helpful, so. Thanks, uh, for bringing that up, Destiny. And, um, you know, I just want to, once again, put it out there that we're all a big family. Um, it's not a big corporation. So, um, that's, that's the, uh, the neat thing about Chatham, I hope. So, uh, and Beth has a comment.
Yeah, what I wanted to say was that I was trying to say before, we were talking about life lessons and, you know, academic versus the life. And I want to say for those of us who are older, how many of you remember where you were when you heard that John F. Kennedy had passed on? Those are the sorts of things that are making impression on your life over the years. And these are the, probably the same sorts of things that these kids are going to remember going forward in their life. Probably more so than the academics.
Thank you, Beth. Any other, uh, pieces for maybe future items? All right, we're gonna move along and we're gonna go back into our second public comment, which, uh, once again is open to any public, uh, any of our attendees, teachers, anybody. Feel free to speak up and we have a hand up and I think it was Jen.
Yeah, I just promoted her to, um.
She disappeared as quick as I saw her. Hi, Jen.
I think it happened last time.
Yeah, somehow when I get promoted, I, it like kicks me off and then pulls me back in. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Um, so I just very, very quickly tonight, um, number one, I, I just want to thank you for, for hearing me last night or hearing me last week, rather. Um, I appreciate the, the opportunity and I appreciate, um, what I heard about how, how welcome those kinds of inputs are. Um, so just thank you. Thank you to Sal, um, for working, uh, his magic and getting us the ninety minutes to go get the vaccine. I got my first shot. I couldn't move my arm for a week, but I feel really, really hap, or sorry, for a day. I feel really, really happy that, uh, that that is, is in my arm and I'm already feeling tremendously better about things, so. Um, I thank you for that. And then really, the re, the real reason I just raised my hand is that in terms of that liaison committee, that has traditionally been run through the union. Uh, and I'd just like to bring it to your attention that, that after the, the Janus decision in the Supreme Court a couple of years ago, all teachers are no longer required to be in the union. So running the liaison committee through the union could in fact, um, remove some people from that pipeline. So just a point of information on that and that's all I have to say. So thank you, thank you all. And I'm a little bit hooked on these meetings. I've been sitting here grading and I, I, I actually find it kind of interesting and I expect you'll probably see me back in the future. So thank you all very much.
We gotta get you another hobby.
Thank you, Jen, and I'm, uh, glad to hear you got, you were able to get the, uh, vaccine. Sorry, um, major armsore, but, um, I think the long run, it'll, it'll pay off and, um, the way our, uh, committee works, uh, like I said before, normal channels, uh, go to your building head with any concerns, uh, uh, Sal's, uh, door is always open and then, uh, um, and we're always here for you guys. So no union, uh, necessary, uh, don't feel, outside of anything. Um, like I said, we're a big family here. So I appreciate you for, uh, tuning in and, uh, and sharing your ques, your concerns and opinions and stuff with us. So thank you very much. Does anybody else out there have any questions or concerns? If, um, you're new and not sure how to raise your hand to make it obvious to us, it's down in, if you scroll down to the bottom of your page, uh, and you see participants, and click on it, that'll give you opportunity to raise your hand. Used to have, um, the little clapping hands too, but I see that it's gone these days. But, all right, we're gonna move along. I see no hands. So, uh, thanks everybody for, uh, attending and, uh, once again, uh, pulling heads. Awesome job. Um, thanks for the update. Ted summed it up. Keep your chins up. We, we know what it must be like and, uh, keep on keeping on, like I said before. So you guys are strong. Doing a great job. Nobody can expect anymore. So, and if we gotta make up our own diplomas, John, we will. That, it's that time of the night, uh, do I get a motion for endearment?
So moved.
Second?
Second?
Any questions or comments? Glad to see you made it. Denise, you're a real trooper. I hope you didn't break speed limits trying to get to a, uh, con- connection. But you guys all have a good night and, uh, I need to know if everybody's in favor. Anybody opposed? Good night.
Good night.
Have a good night.